Okay, we have everyone here then. So I'll call to order the meeting, regular board meeting Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors for April 20th, 2020. First item on the agenda is citizens input for anything that's not on the agenda. Someone would like to address the board, please wave or otherwise maybe I ask Dave to do protocol here first.
Thank you. Yes, I'll just review a couple of items briefly here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks to everybody for joining us this evening and for being patient as we do our second virtual Board of Supervisors regular meeting. It's been advertised as a virtual meeting. It's viewable as you all are entered with us this evening on the Zoom video chat function. There is also an audio conference bridge that's been opened up, which is accessible by accessing the township's main line. It's eight one four two three eight four six five one and then dialing extension thirty seven ninety nine when the prompts answer. And so if there's any issues with this Zoom meeting or any reason that for whatever reason at all, it can't continue, I can end the meeting and then we can reconvene via the conference bridge again at extension thirty seven ninety nine. Hopefully, there won't be any issues because this is a useful platform for dual aids and you know, sharing screens and being able to get deeper into agenda items, but we do have that option available to us if we need. Secondly, this is an approved meeting and as I said earlier, has been advertised in accordance with the PA Sunshine Act, which allows during this time of disaster recovery for virtual meetings to be conducted. But logistically, it also requires that a roll call be taken and that elected officials that are on the call are able to hear and then verbally respond. So I'm going to run through that right now. And if I just, when I say your name, if you could just say here or present and this way that'll cover us from the purposes of acknowledging that the board members that are with us this evening can engage in the discussion. So Mr. Miller. Ms. Stevens.
Yes.
Ms. Strickland.
Present.
Ms. Denini.
Here.
Mr. Mitra.
Present.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum. As Mr. Miller indicated a moment ago, if anybody wants to participate in discussion or speak on behalf of a particular item, you can either unmute yourself and then ask to be recognized by the chairman. You can also, you know, try to get my attention or the attention of the chairman through the group chat or by using a reaction icon, which is if you're at least on their computer, you can access on the bottom of the screen where it says reactions, there's a thumbs up or a hand clap icon that come with the Zoom feature that you can engage in. And then last for anybody who just joined us. If you are here to talk about a specific item and you haven't already, please type your name and your municipality of residence in the chat so that we can capture that data for the minutes and I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Miller.
Okay. Okay, the first item on the agenda then is citizens input for anything that's not already on the agenda. If anyone cares to address the board, let us know with a chat, a wave or whatever. Seeing none, I'll move to the next item, which is the approval of the minutes of the April sixth twenty twenty meeting.
Motion to approve.
Okay, the motion and a second. Is there any discussion or modifications? Seeing none, all in favor? Hi.
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 Motion carries. And again, I'll remind everybody, if you're voting against, please say no because we have the delayed timing. So it makes it very clear if everyone says no for no vote. So.
An additional, I'm sorry to interrupt, but an additional helpful, something that I think would be helpful particularly to Rhonda recording this would be if you're making a motion or a second, if you could just identify yourself by name. So you could say, you know, Lisa moves or Laura moves, something like that. So this way we can capture that in the minutes.
Okay. So the next item is under reports or report from the manager on COVID nineteen issues.
Thank you. My report will be fairly brief. Staff at Ferguson Township continue to operate at reduced levels in response to the COVID nineteen pandemic. So before I begin, I do want to again formally convey my appreciation to our residents and business owners in the township who have been patient and understanding as we work toward recovery from this crisis. Our crisis management team has begun planning for the reconstitution and recovery of municipal operations with staff hopefully beginning to report back as early as May fourth. Details are still being finalized. Staff will rotate start times and shift assignments in order to maintain appropriate social distancing and follow CDC and Department of Health protocols to ensure minimum exposure. All staff will wear masks and proper personal protective equipment when coming into contact with the public and coworkers. While staff will begin reporting to the office, the office will remain closed to the public beyond May fourth and until further notice. The crisis management team and myself will continue to reevaluate the the nature of the pandemic and its response, determine when an appropriate time to open, open up to the public might be. A round of brush collection will begin on May fourth. Because of our anticipated staffing constraints, residents are requested to allow a little bit of extra time for collection this round. And collection will resume as operations and staff permit.
I think that's a glitch on their part.
Please be reminded that burning leaves is prohibited by state law and burning brush beyond a recreational campfire requires a permit from the Center Region Code Administration. Finally, the construction of the Public Works Maintenance Facility resumed today following an exemption from Governor Wolf's order issued by the Department of Community and Economic Development. All of our prime contractors on the job will observe appropriate safety protocol as they resume operating. Bottom, that concludes my report unless there are any questions from the board or the public.
Any comments or questions for Dave?
Yeah, just a request, Dave, would you please, I think as the host mute everyone? And they can then unmute themselves if they want to speak, I guess Galaxy, yeah, X nine is now muted. Yeah, thanks.
Yes, I will. I will do that. Thank you.
Okay, next item is, let's see, the tree commission report that has been. Oh, I was not unmuted. Okay. The tree commission report has been postponed to the next meeting. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah. Mr. Flume requested to postpone the report until after the tree commissions had a chance to meet, which is April twenty seventh.
Okay, so then we move on to unfinished business. The first item is a request for modification slash waiver, the subdivision of tax parcel two four dash four dash six seven and replot of tax parcel two four dash four dash six seven C. State College Pennsylvania Whitehall Road Sheets Land Development Plan.
Hey, I'm gonna ask Jenna to introduce that topic and I believe she's got some material to display as well.
Yep. All right. So on April nineteenth, Pantera Engineering submitted an application for consideration of a modification waiver from twenty two five one two sidewalks, a section of the ordinance required sidewalks to be shown on both sides of streets for every preliminary and final subdivision and land development plan. And that's sure to be posted upon final approval. The Harnor Farm subdivision plan of tax parcel twenty four four sixty seven and the replot of twenty four four sixty seven C was submitted concurrently with the Whitehall Road Sheets Land Development Plan that is lot one on the Harnor Farm subdivision plan. The applicant is requesting that no sidewalks be required on the Harnor Farm subdivision plan as follows. So for lot one, which is the Sheets Land Development Plan, no sidewalk be required on the Harnor Farm subdivision plan because sidewalks are shown on the Sheets Land Development Plan. Lot two, no sidewalks be required on the Harnor Farm subdivision plan since there's no land development plan proposed for the law at this time. Sidewalks will be proposed when a land development plan is submitted for lot two. Lot three Orchard View subdivision plan and tax parcel twenty four four sixty seven, no sidewalks be required on the Harnor Farm subdivision plan. For this lot, since it's shown along the south side of West Whitehall and the west side of West College Avenue as well as both sides of the proposed interior public road and the frontage of the replotted tax parcel on Orchard, on the Orchard View subdivision plan. The revised tax parcel twenty four four sixty seven, which is the north side of West Whitehall Road. No sidewalks be required on the Harnor Farm subdivision plan for this parcel since no land development is proposed at this time. Sidewalks will be proposed when a subdivision and land development plan is submitted for this parcel. So Planning Commission reviewed the application at their April thirteenth twenty twenty regular meeting and recommended approval pending additional conditions within lot two section of, and it's to read no sidewalks be required on the Harnor Farm subdivision plan since there's no land development plan proposed for the law at this time. Sidewalks will be proposed when a land development plan is submitted for lot two or when seventy five percent of Orchard View subdivision develops, whichever comes first. And then provided with the agenda is a memo from myself describing that exactly along with planning commission's recommendation.
Okay, thanks Jenna. Do board members have any questions or comments about what Jenna just presented?
I have. Can everyone see this PowerPoint?
Yes.
Yes.
So this kind of explains the Harnor Farm subdivision plan. To the left side is the north side of Whitehall Road that is not going to be shown. That was the final part of the lot. Lot four, I believe, Whitehall Road is right here or the sheets is right here on the corner of College and Whitehall Road. Lot two is directly to the right of that one. That's where no land development plan is currently submitted. And then the larger parcel behind those two fronting on college is the thirty six subdivision of Orchard View.
Okay. I noticed, I know that we have several representatives in the developer. Did anyone care to add anything or? Okay, I'm not seeing any indication of anyone had anything there. So take it to the board. Do we have a motion?
Okay, I moved that the Board of Supervisors grant the waiver of chapter twenty two, part five, section five hundred twelve sidewalks to the applicant of the Harnor View subdivision of tax parcel twenty four four sixty seven and replot of tax parcel twenty four four sixty seven C. And include the additional conditions within the lot two section to read no sidewalks be required on the Harmar Farm subdivision plan since there is no land development plan proposed for that lot at this time. Sidewalks will be proposed when a land development plan is submitted for lot two or when seventy five percent of Orchard View subdivision develops, whichever comes first.
Patty Stevens seconds.
Okay, we have a motion by presuger, second by Patty. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this is, or Lisa.
Um, so Jenna, if you could just break this down a little bit for us. So what this is intending is that the sidewalks are already depicted in areas where there are land development plans being submitted and it's just across the street. They're not going to be required to record sidewalks on those areas because there are no land development plans there. It is not, it's not giving, it's not saying there will not be sidewalks in certain places.
Yeah, it was directly for the larger parcel north of Whitehall Road. That will be when the subdivision and land development plan is submitted for that parcel sidewalks will be shown on that plan. I think most of the conversation from planning commission's meeting was about lot two, which is right next to the Sheets Land Development Plan because that's the only lot where there is no land development plan submitted at this time. And it was staff's recommendation that we wanted that connection just for the neighbors living in that Orchard View subdivision. So it was our recommendation that that lot two would be connected. There would be sidewalks on that. And that's why you see the recommendation from planning commission when a land development plan is submitted for lot two or when seventy five percent of Orchard View is developed.
And you're talking about the internal road between the sheets and lot two, not the not the Apple. Apple View Road.
Yeah, there'll be sidewalks on Apple View Road. There'll also be sidewalks along the outer perimeter of that Orchard View lot. This is solely related to.
Sorry, I meant you're talking, what you're talking about that the planning commission discussed is that internal area and not because there is a land development plan for the apple.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the sidewalks are already, yeah.
Yeah, it would be right along the West College sidewalk. Essentially, there wouldn't be a connection from the sheets to the Orchard View development. And that's why they put in the recommendation whether land development plan is submitted for that lot. That sidewalks be shown or if seventy five percent of those Orchard View lots are developed. That will then trigger sidewalks to be shown on that lot two to have that pedestrian connection for that entire area.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion or questions?
So, so sorry, so the, the last comment was, I thought that so when they could develop seventy five percent of the thing and not put in the sidewalk, is that correct?
That was planning commission's recommendation.
Because prior to that change, it was what? Because the planning commission recommended that change.
Prior to the playing commission recommendation, the applicant requested that no sidewalks would be shown until a land development plan is submitted for lot two.
Okay, okay.
But without the modification, just to clarify, they would be required to construct sidewalks as, as part of the, of the approval process or as part of the development process for subdivision. So the, you know, all, in addition to the restriction on or the condition on the plan, if there is a time that the board feels that sidewalks ought to be constructed, you're permitted to do so here or in any location by resolution as well. So there's, you know, if, if the condition really warranted the construction for sidewalks at an earlier time, you'd still be permitted to, you know, consider that option as well.
Do you have a map Jenna of where the sidewalks will go in first where they're currently proposed?
Or the whole developed area.
Mm hmm. Is there a layout of that?
I would say on each individual plan.
So, but essentially they will be put in immediately from the is it Apple View? Is that the?
I don't have the plan. Orchard View subdivision, so it will be, they'll be in place on Whitehall Road for that.
They'll be all the way down to that entrance road, the Apple Drive. Okay.
And I believe it includes the replot of Harners lot. So there'll be a sidewalk in front of his property as well as all of sheets. And then there would be a blank area with the second lot next to sheets and then it would pick up again at Orchard View on West College.
John Sepp, the Orchard View lot, the sidewalk would be built lot by lot as the homes are built and that's typical for residential subdivision. And I believe that was the thinking with the planning commission is that when seventy five percent of the lots are built, that means that seventy five percent of the sidewalks in Orchard View would be built. And at that point, it would be a logical time to have the connection through lot two, which would connect.
John Sepp's on there. So you're talking, yeah, you're talking about.
That, that would be a logical time to connect the residential subdivision to the sheets sidewalk. If there hasn't been a development for lot two by that time.
Okay.
Anything else? Laura.
Thank you. Um, I could, I'm sorry, I'm having a little trouble understanding this and I think maybe partly it's the format. Could I, could I see the, the map and can you show me lot two in comparison to the other land development plans?
And it might be helpful to put the Orchard View subdivision plan up rather than the four lot plan.
There we go.
So that is the commercial was maybe residential above it. Is that lot two? It's between the sheets and the residential. I'm sorry, I don't remember.
You're muted Jenna.
Is somebody talking?
Jenna is unmuting.
I couldn't unmute with a full PowerPoint going. Okay. Thanks, Dave. So, um, yeah, so a lot that we are referring to is right in between the Sheets Line Development Plan on the corner and then the Orchard View is kind of meandering around it. Yes, that's how I would call it.
And and lot two, what, what, what is that zoned?
That's commercial. Yep.
I guess I'm not, I guess I'm not thrilled with the idea of seventy five percent of it being developed before that connection is made.
Laura, I think I tend to agree with you now that I'm looking at this because you don't know, like if the far end of that street gets developed, they would have to take to safely, if they were going to sheets, say riding their bikes, you know, a long way to go if there's no sidewalk.
Right. And I think it's different internally. I know John Sepp mentioned in a residential neighborhood, perhaps the sidewalk's not constructed until each home is constructed. But I think that's, that's a different kind of a connection and a smaller road. And so maybe wouldn't matter as much even if there wasn't sidewalk internally. Maybe it would matter a lot that there was that sidewalk there.
Right.
So, so I'm trying to understand this. So when it was, I'm presuming this was approved and, and, and the sidewalk was supposed to be built in the original plan and now there is a request to exempt that part. Is that correct?
These are currently, this is one big empty field. So a requirement within our subdivision land development ordinance is that when a subdivision or land development plan is submitted, that a sidewalks must be shown on both sides of streets of these plans. So as we go through, there's three plans that you will all be looking at tonight. Partner is, I would say up top view and then we slowly get down into Orchard View and then into sheets. So this is the big overarching subdivision of this whole area cutting off essentially four big lots between Whitehall and College. So there currently is no development on this site. We have a land development plan for the corner lot, which will be the sheets. And then the subdivision of all these residential lots behind that sheets.
I have a question. If we do not grant this modification, then the sidewalk would have to be shown on that plan. But does it have to be, when does it have to be built if that is the case?
It would have to be built before we would sign off for it's a complete project. So.
But any part of the project or?
It would be for the Harnor subdivision is what we are request that the modification request is for because that was the first plan that was submitted. So this is all about what's going to be shown on the Harnor subdivision plan.
So this is Dave Modricker. Just in general, when a subdivision or land development plan like this comes in and it gets approved, developer will post surety for all public improvements. They'll sign an agreement saying that those improvements will be built within fifty weeks. If they're not, then upon mutual agreement, that period of time gets extended. Sometimes they're built within the first year and sometimes they're extended by mutual consent year after year after year. And you to post surety either based on an engineer's estimate or by increasing it by ten percent. So I think in, in general, that might answer your question, Steve, or maybe it helps with some of the other board members' questions.
Yeah, I think so for my question anyway.
Okay.
So, so what I'm trying to figure out is where the, will there be cases where there'll be units build and people would not have a way to walk and, you know, for how long? You know, would that sort of situation exist if we approve this motion?
So for every house that will be built in this Orchard View subdivision, those property owners will install a sidewalk for the front of their house. So this would be a meal for the interior of that site.
Right. But the one, the one beside the road and.
The along the road.
Right.
Would those essentially are corner lots. So they would be responsible for that as well and they'd honestly probably be the last ones to be sold in my opinion, but. And like planning commission, they agreed with four or three of the four of the asks that the applicant was requesting and they provided their recommendation. And you are more than welcome to do the same.
Okay, can he? Lisa.
Are there cat bus stops depicted on here right now?
John, I thought there was a cat a bus stop on here.
Hey Jenna, this is Mark Turetti. On the Sheets Land Development Plan, there is one at the shared entrance to West College Avenue right south of the shared entrance drive.
Okay.
You can see right there in the upper right.
Upper right hand corner.
Right there, yeah.
So there would not be a sidewalk there until there's a development there at the bus stop.
But. If I walk it shown there would.
Yeah, it runs up to that cat a drop off, but going south or to the right in this photo, there would be no sidewalk. That would be a lot too.
But there's only no sidewalk if we are right now saying that there doesn't have to be a sidewalk. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, and the recommendation from the planning commission was allow this to occur except for once the residential area is built up to seventy five percent of lots. except for once the residential area is built up to seventy-five percent of lots, then this connection would need to be made.
Yeah.
So the developer could develop seventy percent of lots and just stop and not make that connection for, for a long time, forever, really, if he wanted to.
Uh, he, he most typically wouldn't do that as far as the being able to sell the lots provides um some of the financing to move this development along. He's not gonna probably stop building lots just to not build a sidewalk.
Well, I, I wouldn't think that, but I'm sure it's part, it's part of the evaluation of cost of which lots he might develop. Um, so I would like to set that threshold lower. More like um twenty-five percent of lots.
Who would be responsible for clearing the sidewalk if it was in it and the land wasn't developed?
So this is Dave P., uh, you know, a, if a sidewalk is constructed, whether it's in the public right of way or in an easement, it's the obligation of the adjacent, of, of the adjoining property owner to clear and maintain the sidewalk, even if there's no development on it.
Sheets, then?
So?
The Sheets would then be the adjacent property owner?
It, it would be either, uh, no, it wouldn't be the, the, it would be whoever immediately adjoins. So the property owner of, I guess, the future is a future lot two.
Oh. The development company that owns that whatever.
Correct, that's correct.
Okay.
Until it, unless it were turned over to a homeowners association or another agency um had to build out a certain percentage, but that the option would, would lie with the, the private, with a private interest as opposed to the township. And the board could as well um reserve, as you, you would anywhere, your authority under chapter twenty-one, section two oh one, which is you can obligate a property owner at any time to construct a sidewalk in the pro, in the, in the public right of way. So if there are future safety hazards or, or, you know, if you believe that it is in the best interest of the public that um, you know, are residents of that subdivision to have the sidewalk constructed at any time, that's simply done by resolution of the board.
Dave, this is, this is Dave. Do, do you think that is worth putting in the notes here? Or do you think that goes without saying?
What?
I'm not sure I understand the question. Is, is that, you mean whether to reference that, that require or that um provision?
It's just that the notes are contrary to that provision. So in the future, would there be kind of a controversy surrounding whether or not you, you had that authority since you already said they don't need to?
This has come up before. We've just said, no, we can do it whenever.
Okay.
But yeah, but maybe it should be clear because future boards might not understand.
It, you're, I see your point. You, you, so there could, there is potential conflict if there's a condition that's attached to a modification granted by the board that says no sidewalks will be required prior to X percent of the development being constructed. And the board decided at a later date that maybe they wanted sidewalks constructed earlier than that. I do think ultimately the board would retain its authority under uh chapter twenty-one to oblige, even if it's contrary to what is noted on a plan. But it may not hurt to just mention that in the conditions, if you were agreeable to the seventy-five percent or whatever percent threshold that you might put as a caveat to that condition that the board reserves its right under, it, its rights under chapter twenty-one, section two oh one to obligate the property owner to construct sidewalk when it deems it's in the public interest. And that way, if there is conflict, there's no question of um whether or not the, the applicant was aware of that provision prior to approval.
Okay, so I guess the question is, at this point, is there an interest in either making a motion to modify our original motion? Or to move forward? We could modify by changing the percentage, we could modify by adding the, the uh phrase that Dave just mentioned, or we could just vote on it as it is.
Um, when you say phrase that Dave just mentioned, you mean clarifying future boards' power in the note?
Just clarify in the notes that the board reserves the right to override that that seventy-five percent at any time.
Well, definitely I would make that suggestion. Why not be clear? Sure.
I agree.
Can we?
So since we have a motion, we would need a motion to amend.
Okay, motion to amend to clarify that we reserve the right to, at any time, as the board requires sidewalks.
I would also be open to changing, sorry, do we need to motion to accept the amendment to the motion? I think we need a second.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Laura, a second by Lisa to amend the original motion by adding that caveat. Lisa has something else?
Uh, my question was going to be, did we want to consider changing that percentage um even to fifty percent? I'm just, when I look at it, I would expect that the housing lots would be developed faster than the commercial lot. But, and then you'd have houses all the way up Apple, Apple View Drive with no connectivity there for some time potentially. So.
Motion, so why don't we vote on the First Amendment? We have a motion, a second for an amendment. Let's vote on that first. We go into other amendment. So this will be a vote on an amendment to add the statement to the, uh, the, the board deserves the right to require the sidewalk be built sooner. All in favor? Aye.
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 Motion carries. Now we'll go back to Lisa. If you wanted to make a motion to amend, we could do that now, or we can move on to vote on the motion that exists.
Uh, I would suggest making it fifty percent. I think, um, I think that's reasonable. That once fifty percent of the lots are, um, was it developed or had submitted? Yeah, once they were developed, right?
Right.
Um.
Second.
Yeah, I, I have a question on that. Uh, or I'm trying to grapple with this issue and trying to figure out what are the practical implications? And this would be perhaps asking for an opinion from Ms. Wargo or Ms. Mr. Modricar. When these developments come up, in, in reality, are, i- is there's uh an issue there that there will be areas where people will not be able to walk and so on? Um, uh, or, or is that um not going to be that big of a problem? In your.
I would say, yeah, in, in practice, I think what we've seen is that developers quite often, if not always, put the requirement to build the sidewalk on the homeowner when they buy the property. Sidewalks get built in segments. Developments develop along quicker than others. But it is common, as a matter of fact, I think there's provisions in our zoning ordinance that say in a development, if seventy-five percent of the lots are developed, then the township can require the remaining twenty-five percent to be built. And so then that puts it on the developer to put those in so you have connectivity. Till then, what people are doing is basically making little cow paths and walking in the grass in between the sidewalk segments or out on the road. And so that's, I mean, that's, that's what you see happen.
Is there a safety hazard to that?
I think in some developments, you know, like Hillside Farms, when that was developed and then stopped, and we had segments like that, we did have concerns because some of the areas were rocky and weren't really backfilled. You know, behind the curb in areas, maybe Hunter's Chase, I'm thinking of. Last ones I, I walked through, you know, if it's backfilled behind the curb and there's a grass area or something to walk on, it's, it's not as much an issue. But, you know, we do get complaints, we do hear about it. Seventy-five percent has been the standard to date though, for good or bad.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anything else? Okay, we have a motion and a second to change the seventy-five percent to fifty percent required. Dead at fifty percent development require the sidewalk. Any further discussion on that amendment? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
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 The motion carries. So now we're back to the original motion as amended with the two amendments that we've already passed. Is there any further discussion on that? Motion. Uh, appears there's not, so I will call for a vote on the motion as amended. All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. So next, continuing on the same theme, we have the subdivision of tax parcel four dash four sixty-seven and replot of tax parcel twenty-four dash four dash sixty-seven C. Hunter Farms Plan dated March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty. This is Jenna.
Jenna.
On April twenty-second and revised March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty, Pennsboro Engineering submitted a four lot subdivision plan at the corner of West College Avenue and West Whitehall Road on behalf of their client, Aspen Whitehall Partners. The subdivision includes two lots within the general commercial zoning district. That's lot one, Sheets, and then the lot two, which is not vacant. Uh, one lot is located within the rural agricultural zoning district, replotted to tax parcel twenty-four four sixty-seven C. That totals about point six acres. That's um Mr. Harner's land, his home. And one lot within single family residential zoning district, lot three, which is sixteen point five acres. Provided with the agenda is a copy of the memorandum from Christina and X team community planner outlining the remaining conditions associated with the plan. Of comments on the Harner Farm and Orchard View subdivision plans as well as State College Whitehall Road Sheets Land Development Plan have been consolidated in the attached memo and would apply to all plans conditionally approved by the board this evening. Planning Commission reviewed the Harner Farm subdivision plan during their April thirteenth meeting and recommended approval to the Board of Supervisors pending outstanding staff comments.
Thank you. Uh, do we have, so I guess this one, let's just start with the motion. Got unmuted there.
This is Lisa Strickland. I'll move that the Board of Supervisors approve the Harner Farm subdivision of tax parcel twenty-four dash four dash sixty-seven and replot of tax parcel twenty-four dash four dash sixty-seven C, subject to the conditions of the Community Planner Memorandum dated April thirteenth, twenty twenty.
I'll second the motion. So we have a motion by Lisa, second by Steve. Is there any discussion on this motion? Uh, seeing no hand waving symbols on the screen, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay, we did not record votes from Patty or Persentia, so.
Oh, sorry, I, I'm, I'm in favor, as conditionally.
Persentia.
Oh, sorry, I was muted uh in favor, yeah.
Okay, so, so the motion carries five to zero. Okay, thank you. Next is the Orchard View subdivision plan dated March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty.
On May fourteenth, twenty nineteen, and revised March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty, Pentair Engineering submitted thirty-six lot subdivision plan on behalf of their client, Aspen Whitehall Partners. Subdivision includes thirty-six lots within single family residential zoning district with corridor over, overlay. Size approximately sixteen and a half acres. Provided with the agenda is a copy of the memorandum from Christina, the community planner, outlining the remaining conditions associated with the plan. Planning Commission reviewed the Orchard View subdivision plan during their April thirteenth meeting and recommended approval to the Board of Supervisors pending outstanding staff comments.
Do we have a motion for this one?
I'll move, this is Lisa. I'll move that the Board of Supervisors approve the State College PA Whitehall Road Sheets Land Development Plan subject to the conditions of the Community Planner Planner's memorandum dated April thirteenth, twenty twenty.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
She read the wrong one.
Oh, yeah, that was Whitehall.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
We're on Orchard View.
Oh, I'm sorry.
They're all running together at this point.
I know, I'm having trouble flipping back and forth between everything, okay. Or, sorry, Orchard View. This is number three.
Yes.
Right.
All right, I'll move that the Board of Supervisors approve the Orchard View subdivision plan subject to the conditions of the Community Planner's memorandum dated April thirteenth, twenty twenty.
Second.
Give a motion from Lisa, second from Persentia. Any discussion on this one? Uh, seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor? Aye.
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 The motion carries five to zero. Uh, next is State College PA Whitehall Road Sheets Land Development Plan dated March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty.
On April twenty-second, twenty nineteen, revised March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty, Pentair Engineering submitted land development plan at the corner of West College Avenue and Whitehall Road on behalf of their client, Aspen, Aspen Whitehall Partners. The parcel situated in general commercial zoning district and land development plan includes a six thousand square foot Sheets convenience store and drive-through with a thousand square foot car wash. The gasoline dispensing station um consists of six fuel pump islands. There'll be forty-seven parking spaces provided on site, including three eighty-eight accessible spaces. Driveway access points and parking spaces will be established on West Whitehall Road and West College Avenue. Storm art detention and infiltration basins are proposed southwest of the convenience store. Provided with the agenda is a copy of a memorandum from Christina, Community Planner, outlining the remaining conditions associated with the plan. The Planning Commission reviewed Whitehall Road Sheets Land Development Plan during their April thirteenth meeting and recommended approval to the Board of Supervisors pending outstanding staff comments.
Thank you.
I recommend that the Board of Supervisors approve the State College PA Whitehall Road Sheets Land Development Plan, subject to the conditions of the Community Planner's memorandum dated April thirteenth, twenty twenty.
This is Lisa, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion from Patty and a second from Lisa. Is there any discussion?
Thank you. Um, could you just talk me through um like any changes that were made based on previous conversations about lighting and noise and buffers between the neighborhood and this development? Um, maybe you could pull it up somewhere so that we can see it while you're talking about it. And and I guess this also relates to the subdivision plan. Just kind of talk me through how the existing neighborhood's going to be buffered um from this development, especially in regard to light and sound.
I own from Pantera, I'm gonna pull up the land development plan from Sheets. I do know that the lighting for the Sheets is in compliance with our lighting ordinance.
Yeah, I think that the last time we talked about it, we all acknowledged that it would be, or else it wouldn't pass, but that the folks that were interested in developing were really supportive of the neighborhood's needs and that they were going to be sure to be sensitive of that as they designed their plan. So I just wondered if you could, if they could walk me through how they did that.
Hey Jenna, this is Mark Toretta, Pentair Engineering. Probably a couple of things we can deal with. First be with the lighting. Do you have those exhibits that you can pull up that showed the actual renderings of what the lighting will look like in the evenings? Sheets had the lighting consultant prepare renderings based upon the light levels in the areas of the site to show you with these LEDs how, you know, directed wise that they could be directed down to the ground. You know, more precise and it's really not going to be leaving the site at all. And it also show you through these through these exhibits here, if Jenna can call them up.
Yeah, unfortunately, my internet isn't doing too well. It's going to take me an hour.
I got you. I got you. Jumping in here.
Going on two hours now.
Taking over. I think this is what you're referring to.
Yeah, the scans.
Yes, these are, you know, pretty much rendering shown, you know, what the lighting is going to look like in the evenings from different viewpoints. They're looking, this is not looking, this is east on Whitehall Road. And that's with the lighting. Also, as you knows, you know, the canopy is not their typical lit canopy. They've changed the canopy on the store where it would not be, would not be the the big red lit canopy, as you can see on these rims. But still, the light is concentrated under the canopy to get the required lighting that's needed, you know, to fuel the cars there on there. So their lighting consultants, you know, just concentrated the lighting where it was needed and, you know, directed it and at the levels where they need to very be as bright, you know, the iron is bright. And so it really minimized the amount of impact to the surrounding neighborhood.
I'm I'm pleasantly surprised if that's actually a representation. I'm disoriented because I don't see the big a big red awning. Is that?
Yeah.
Correct? I'm seeing that.
Correct, yeah. There is, there is no big red awning on this one, then.
It's so great. It's so nice. Thanks.
Okay.
I would say I like that a lot better than the standard one.
Yeah, so classy. I mean, maybe, I don't know if I want to say that, but it seems like that. So how about the stormwater? Do the stormwater basins extend the whole way to the residential? Sorry, I know we already are past this, but just kind of getting an overview. Do the stormwater basins for all of this development that are happening extend the whole way to the adjacent existing neighborhood?
Ultimately, yes. I mean, first, you know, there's, there are but, I think, about five or six infiltration basins on the sheet site. And then they all go to the basin that is in between the sheet site and the Orchard View subdivision. Yeah, kind of, kind of in the bottom right there of the, of the, of the plan. There is a infiltration basin and then there is a detention basin. Those are designed per the township ordinance with the, the wellhead protection requirements meeting that. And so it goes through the numerous basins here on the sheet side and then goes to the detention basin. Then after that, it, it does go down through the Orchard View basins and all communities release down through there. So there, there will be, it's a, between the property owners between, there's going to be property maintenance agreement between the Sheets property, lot two and Orchard View on the maintenance of these basins and it'll define who is responsible for which parts of the maintenance because in a pretty much Sheets and Lot Two are kind of ultimately sharing part of the Orchard View basin down below with their drainage coming into that. So there is a increment that my client's attorney has drafted up and will be submitting that to, to the township staff to review.
In the, in the Orchard View subdivision, that's going to abut the existing neighborhood. Those stormwater basins, do they go the whole way to the property line? So are you going to clear? Are you going to clear all the existing vegetation over there? I know, again, we're past that.
In one area, where I guess if you, if you can zoom in down, down to the bottom of the sheet there, there is a tree row that's adjacent to the Myers property that for the most part up through lot five, that is, that tree row is remaining. We did put a swell that we need was knee back behind the lot, but we put it in front of the tree row so that the trees would not have to be taken down for that. And but beyond that point, beyond lot five, most of the trees in that area are being removed. Except down, down in the, in the far right corner, there are still some remaining there. In that area, you can kind of see where, where they do remain. But for the size of the basins, what's and what's required for the, for the ordinance, those are, that's pretty much, you know, is what area that's needed for that.
So all of that existing tree line really is gone?
Past, past lot five, yes.
And the stormwater is going to come off the Sheet slot through the development and into those big basins there?
Yeah, through, through some pipes. There's some drainage adjustments through the lots that it'll be conveyed underground and then, then through the Apple V drive right away, then down to the, down to the Orchard View basins.
Okay, so we, so.
This is John Sepp. There, there is also infiltration basins on, on the Sheet slot as well. I just wanted to point that out.
Okay, well, that's, that is where I was headed. I was going to say, you know, this doesn't look a lot like low-impact design. Well, at all to me, what I'm seeing, the others in the lighting, yes, good job with that. But this does not look like it's dispersed through the site like at all. I don't know. Do I see any trees? Do I see any places where water is being directed like up above? Because I feel like if there was more integration, which supposedly we did that in our ordinance. We made more integration, integrated stormwater management. It seems like you wouldn't have had to make such big basins there and maybe could have saved some more of that tree line. Like for neighborhood preservation and also I'm, I'm concerned about all that water going that direction. Revoicing what the neighborhood said and just kind of seeing how the earth slopes. It's not really that difficult to understand how the existing neighborhood is probably going to take on water. So I just, could you walk me through where the, the water is being infiltrated up above?
Okay, I mean, if you want to go to the, to the Sheets Land Development Plan, that may be easier to see with the basins there. Go to one that shows some grading on it.
I don't believe my presentation has the grading.
Okay, well, okay, there are, ultimately, I think there's one, one, two, three. I think there's five infiltration basins on the sheet site. So it isn't like we have just one big basin. We have spread it out throughout their site. For some of the area that's coming off of West College Avenue and some of the parking area. There's an area where you can see that is infiltration basin number six that is taking some of that. And like I said, that, those basins are designed infiltration, but there's still be, there will still be some runoff. And then that goes into infiltration basin five, it outfalls and goes through that one. But that one also is draining some of the site, some of the car wash area and, and some of the entrance drive area. Also, over there, now going on the other side of the site over, over by Whitehall Road. We also have a couple, couple infiltration basins over there. We have infiltration basin number four, which a good bit of the, of the parking lot. Where the canopies and that go is all being drained to that area. Also with that, what we're doing, we've separated for, for spill protection. We, we've separated and have, have a trench drain system above the, above the fuel pumps to take clean water into that basin. And then downhill of the fuel pumps, we have a trench drain to catch anything for any spillage that will go into an underground fuel, underground tank that will be able to capture those spills in there. So that's the infiltration basin four and then infiltration basin three. Some, some, some of that from four goes through that, but it also catches some of the entrance drive. And then, then from there, those all combine on the sheet site and go into infiltration basin two. And that is an infiltration basin where ultimately after, after reaches a certain level, it will go into the detention basin B. There's a burn after reaches a certain level to go into the detention basin B. It's detained there and then ultimately go down into the other basin. So there is, you know, it is spread out through, through the, the site with regards to everything isn't just directed down to the one little spot at the site. We went through the entire site and picked up small areas of the site and tried to infiltrate those. But ultimately, they all go down to the low points of the site, but you know, for the most part, that will be, okay.
Thanks. I have one more, I have one more question kind of along these lines. It has to do with tree planting. It doesn't, I, it doesn't look like there's the same kind of requirements for parking lots. I don't, don't we, aren't there supposed to be tree islands in these parking lots? And and are, and whether they're supposed to be or not, are you planting any trees? Like even the tiny little, tiny little ornamental type trees?
Yeah, there should be a landscape, you know, there was a landscape.
Yeah, I'm sure there is. I just wondered if you could quick walk me through it.
Okay, I mean, basically.
For heat island effect and for stormwater, I'm just.
And I'm going to grab this screen back from you here. Landscaping plan.
Thanks.
Thanks, Dave.
You're welcome.
Okay, I think maybe just zoom out just a little bit first and then we can go to different, different areas. Yeah, so yeah, along West College Avenue, we have in front of the parking areas and along both ends of it there, we do have you know, basically the islands, you know, at the ends of the parking bays. And then we have double rows of shrubs with, with also the trees to meet those requirements. And then internal in the site, there's street tree plantings. Also, there are on the parking, on the south side of the, of the screen there, that parking area is also screened with.
I see. So basically, there, there are like tree island requirements, but they're behind the parking spaces, not between. Is that?
Yes, well, well, there's, there for one, one every ten spaces is where they're needed at, so.
But what I'm saying is like typically you see them like between or inside a parking lot. These are just to the edge of it then. That's what you're saying.
Yes, because the tree islands needed like once every, once every ten spaces. And then down at that, if you, if you go down further south there, we do have buffer yard plantings for Tom Harner's property as well as what is the Orchard View lots that are, that would be adjacent to the Sheet site. So I'm not sure if Dave could, could go further down on the screen there. Yeah, so, yeah, so we do have pretty intense buffer yard plantings down those areas, the screen, Tom Hunter. And I've worked with Tom on what he would like to see there. There's one or two adjustments with some evergreen trees that he, he wants us to make. We've been coordinating with him on that. And then we, you know, have the buffer yard requirements against the Orchard View lots there also.
Okay, so I, I think, last question. I'm sorry, am I muted? No, okay.
And then also, also Laura, what we do have in the basin bottoms, especially like the, and all them, we have these specialty seed mixes that are low maintenance, that are going to gradually, you know, probably have to be maintained once or twice a year on there that will you know, as far as rather than just have it being a big hole in the ground. So there'll, there'll be these specialty seed mixes that are special for retention basins, infiltration basins, detention basins. In those areas, along with the steep slope in between the basins and the Sheets driveways. We have another especially ornamental grass, or not ornamental grass, but especially seed mix that is for the slope to stabilize that and not have to maintain it.
Thanks. So my last question is my biggest concern is that that neighborhood, the existing neighborhood, after this is developed, is going to get wetter. So what, what do you have to, what do you have to say to that? What are, what are your thoughts on that?
I'm sorry, I missed, they're going to get weather or?
Yeah, that, the, that the runoff from this development is going to go down to coral acres and saturate them where they're already wet. I'm sure it's compliant with our rules.
Yeah, no, I, I don't think it, it goes down that far. I think
Okay.
From where, right now, there is a closed depression where some of it goes into and that is actually off-site, it's not on our property, but down below ours. Where, where most of the drainage currently runs right now for this property. And so that's, we've pretty much taken it where it goes, where it currently goes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Okay, okay. I just wanted to ask just a couple of things about traffic improvements and findings from the traffic impact study specifically about turning lanes, left turn lights and how you're I guess if you could bring up the traffic outline. It kind of went by quickly. I wanted to see if we could take another look at that.
Can you get the traffic up? And I know Ron's on the call.
If you want me to, I can walk through this and I can share my screen.
Oh, you want to share, Ron? Okay.
Can you want, sure. So I'm not sure how much you want to get into on the actual scope of what was done. How about we talk about the improvements?
Yeah, that'd be great.
And then if you have questions about the scope, we can go back to that.
Okay.
This is a conceptual plan that Worcester put together for the project. If you can follow my hand, hopefully you can. This is West College Avenue. This is Whitehall Road, so the proposed Sheets would be on this corner. This is the Nissan dealership. So along College Avenue, they're proposing a right turn D cell lane that would come into the shared driveway for the Sheets and the commercial development. They're also proposing a right turn lane, zero one northbound on College Avenue, turn right on the Whitehall Road. Both of those improvements as part of either the Sheets project or the Orchard View project, whichever one would get approved first. So they would have to guarantee those improvements. Those are for everything that's on the south side of Whitehall Road for development. Anything future on the north side of Whitehall Road would have additional study and determinations. Additional improvements they're looking at is constructing this crosswalk that goes across West College Avenue, which does not exist today. So that included the curb ramps, push buttons and ped heads. In addition, on Whitehall Road, so this is the state side of Whitehall Road, this left turn lane for turning south on the College Avenue is going to be lengthened by striping. There's a section of Whitehall Road in there that's really not utilized for turn lanes right now, so some repainting will lengthen that turn lane to what they need. And then the other side of Whitehall Road, this is the township's side of Whitehall Road. So again, what College Avenue is just off the view to the right here. This is the proposed driveway into the Sheets would be extending this three-lane section back through that driveway and constructing back-to-back left turn lanes on Whitehall Road and then tapering back to the two-lane section. What's not depicted here but is part of the required improvements though, is back at this, in the same intersection with respect to the traffic signal. In addition to this pedestrian crosswalk, would be adding left turn arrows on Whitehall Road. In addition to this pedestrian crosswalk, would be adding left turn arrows on Whitehall Road. They would be the new style of left turn arrow that's the flashing yellow arrows. It's a four section traffic signal head. And it allows the signal to operate in different phasing schemes for different times of the day. So for example, in the morning on Whitehall Road, when there's a lot of left turning traffic coming in, these vehicles would get a left turn arrow, so they will be protected and they could get through before the opposing traffic goes. In the afternoon, when this isn't very heavy, but this one's heavier, these people will get the left turn arrow in the afternoon. They wouldn't have an arrow in the morning, a protected error. They would just have a flashing yellow arrow. So depending upon the time of day, it would be either permissive movement or a protective movement. And then moving forward, as we get more experience with how the intersection operates, we can always adjust the time of day as to when those types of arrows would come up for the motor public. That's pretty much a summary of what the improvements are. They also studied some other intersections, but there were no other required improvements at the other study intersections.
Thanks for reviewing that, Ron. That left turn light going from the sheet side of Whitehall back onto College Avenue is a really important improvement there. It's already a problem. So I'm happy to see that. I have a follow up question.
Sure.
Thank you. Where you said past the main intersection, the right, the dedicated right turn into the parking lot? Yes.
Yes.
Yes, as they as you turn into the parking lot there, what kind of pavement markings will be there for eventual pedestrians that'll be using that to access the residential area? Is that like a standard and who has to maintain that?
I don't recall if there's any pavement markings shown on that driveway crossing. And again, this is not the entrance to the residential. This is the entrance into the sheets.
Right.
Okay.
Just imagining that there'll be a lot of people that don't want to deal with the intersection at all, kind of scoot through the intersection, glide into that lane, go right around that corner. And that'll be fine if there's no pedestrians there, but once the further down commercial and the residential is built, there'll be more pedestrian traffic there. And I'm just learning from past experience with the Musser Gap and how there was a crosswalk once and then it disappeared and it will never be again until, I don't know. You know, it's a game of who's responsible now. So I guess since this is all happening now, do we need to ask also that they're doing a crosswalk there forever and maintaining that?
So I'll say the crosswalk exists whether it's painted or not. So I think the question is, are there gonna be pavement markings to delineate the crosswalk?
Yeah.
And and I don't recall if the plan shows pavement markings there. And I don't know if I don't think our ordinance even requires it. And I don't know if PennDOT would require that as part of the permitting either. This this will be an access that PennDOT will be permitting off of the state highway. So I don't know if they have rules that would require it. I don't know that they do per se. But obviously, the applicant could offer to paint it. And then if it's shown on the land development plan, I think then there may be opportunities for enforcement through through that mechanism.
Anything else on the this plan?
So just one more question. So there won't be any restrictions on the the College Avenue exit. You can exit and turn left or exit and turn right.
That's correct. It's a full movement access, left in, left out, right in, right out.
What? This this little thing down here, that right?
That right there, yes.
What? Is that is that something we have to allow? That seems I don't understand why. That seems people are speeding up to do what they want to do at that intersection. Why are we allowing left turns out of there and no signal?
The traffic study shows that it meets the requirements for site distance. And it also meets acceptable levels of service. So PennDOT is allowing that as a full movement access. And we would also, it would meet the requirements of our ordinance too, if that was a local township road. So if it meets the requirements for safety and for levels of service, then they have the right to have the access by our ordinance. But again, this one will be regulated by PennDOT, but PennDOT has also accepted the results of the traffic study.
So what there's gonna be a stop sign there? Is that?
Yeah, people leaving this driveway, the shared driveway between the sheets and the commercial lot would have a stop condition. That's correct.
Anything else?
I'm sorry. I have lingering concerns about pedestrian safety here. I mean, and thinking that you're all anticipating a lot more bike and pedestrian traffic from the park and maybe from the rental units being built down there. I don't know if they'd really bike or walk down to the sheets, but I would think at least from the park and from these new houses. I wish we could see a four way stop for pedestrian crossing. But I would think that's under PennDOT's authority, so we can't really request that. But yeah, I mean, it's 45 miles an hour here. And if you look at other places, you know, in North Atherton, where there's some commercial and high volumes of traffic, you know, it's really difficult for pedestrians to cross. And this seems like it's gonna see more pedestrian traffic than ever before, one would think, you know, if we're building homes right here and these, you know, this is an appealing business to stop at and, you know, free future commercial development across the street. But I'm not sure what we can put in here at this point, you know, we gave suggestions, I think the crosswalks are good, the push buttons are, you know, hopefully gonna be adequate.
The other thing we can do, the other thing we can do is potentially consider changing the type of pavement markings for the crosswalks. Instead of having the parallel white lines to go with the more visible 24 inch, we call them piano key style markings. Kind of add some emphasis to the crosswalk. That could be done as part of the project as well would be to modify these pavement markings. It's additional cost for the township to maintain those in the future. Because these are less expensive to paint, obviously. But in certain locations where you have more traffic and more pedestrian traffic conflicts, they seem to make sense. I guess what we don't know for certain is what the anticipated pedestrian levels will be, but that is something that that could be done is to change those markings.
That's a great idea and that's cost effective when, like you say, we don't know exactly what the impact, the pedestrian impact would be here. And also hopefully that would encourage drivers to stop behind that crosswalk line and not pull up into it as is usually the case. So they would stop where they're supposed to behind the crosswalk line. So maybe it might help. Yeah, I appreciate that. I think that's a great suggestion.
Anything else? Seeing none. We do have a motion and a second to approve the Sheet's land developer plan. All in favor? I?
I.
I.
I. I.
Okay, that's five. Opposed, none. So motion carries five to nothing.
Jeremy had a couple of comments.
Pardon?
Jeremy had a couple of comments. Jeremy, you want to speak up or?
No, I have, well, I I just mentioned when we were talking about crosswalk paintings about making them three dimensional. I saw, I don't think it's in the United States, but somewhere started doing that. And it actually makes motorists think twice before they go through the crosswalk.
Okay.
Hey, Jenna, one thing I thought of on Orchard View, do we need a conditional approval, conditional use approval for that flag lot? I just thought of that.
We will.
What do we want to get that now? I just I just going through and just that came to my mind for that for that flag law for the stormwater basin.
For the stormwater, yeah.
Is that something we need to add to a future agenda or is that?
Yeah, that could be done at a later time.
Yeah. Because if we haven't, don't have it ready, then.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so that takes care of the whole batch of motions. Want to the employer paid sick leave policy?
Uh, thank you. So this is a continuation of a of a discussion that began. Apologize, let me just circle back to it in my agenda. That began on March 2nd. The board had some discussion about the possibility of implementing a municipal wide sick leave ordinance in a similar manner to the city of Pittsburgh. So I reached out to Julia Aquino, who is an attorney with the firm Campbell Durant, Beatty, Palumbo and Miller. The township typically engages them for human resources, personnel related kinds of questions, labor related legal issues. And this was it was a similar request. So there's a memorandum from Ms. Aquino, which is provided with your agenda that describes some of her concerns as well as a partner in her firm about the township implementing a similar ordinance. So I mean, I just to excuse me, briefly review some of the the reservations. I think in general, the suggestion from the the firm is that there would be some significant challenges if the township were to consider enacting a similar ordinance, not only from a legal perspective, meaning a big part of the reason why the city of Pittsburgh was ultimately enabled to do this was because they have their own Board of Health and they have their own department that would that manages this program for them. And so there was a caveat in in the law that governs how those boards operate that permitted them to enact these kinds of regulations. Since that's not the case in Ferguson Township, that would be one of the the challenges. And then the second challenge that they've identified is what they've called practical implications, or I guess logistical implications. Because we don't have a agency that would be charged with enforcing the ordinance, it would be difficult for us to, you know, manage the program for reasons that Ms. Aquino cites in her memorandum. So you know, that that's the outcome of the research that was done in response to this request. Generally, I think this firm provides us with sound legal advice. So my recommendation staff perspective is that there not be any further pursuit of this ordinance, primarily for reasons that were identified in the memo that's attached to the agenda. But I can answer any questions or follow ups if there's any need to do any more digging.
Thank you, Dave. Basically, this was put on the agenda as a discussion originally. So if we don't want to move forward with it, it doesn't it doesn't require that the board take any action at this point. If we would want to pursue anything further, then we would need a motion. So we can start with discussion and determine where we want to go with that.
So at this point, I I read that carefully and at this point, I don't think that I would recommend pursuing going forward. However, I have some questions that I would like to perhaps send in an email through Dave or talk to the attorney directly to ask. And then for now, it this can be tabled or something.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments on it or? Well, I just want to say thanks to President for bringing it up. I mean, it was worth looking into, but there's nothing that, yeah, we could do. I do think the Supreme Court was very careful to write an opinion that applied to one specific case and not trying not to set a precedent. So and that's sort of what the lawyer said, I think. So but at this point, I I don't see any path forward with it unless anyone else wants to do it. So I think that sort of ties it's going up.
I I also appreciate you bringing it bringing it forward. Thank you. It's worth exploring.
Okay, and that finishes up the unfinished business. So I propose that we take about five minutes here and then get back together. So I'll save everybody about five.
Great.
Or something that I don't know if that's just the standard three, four weeks later when you don't have it or really.
Yeah. And I don't think anybody understands yet what the rural versus urban kind of, you know, complications are. So we'll wait and see.
The state map actually now breaks down the cases by zip code.
Yeah.
Does everybody have their designer masks?
I gotta get mine.
I don't know. I wouldn't call it designer.
Painting masks.
I brought a couple from Taiwan when I went there in March. So I have.
Y'all have yours at the ready. You're like gunslingers with your masks.
Oh, yeah, we're practicing.
Good for you.
That's one of many.
You look like you belong in a comic strip, Jeremy.
My kids used to read.
Ask for him.
Captain Underpants is alive and well, yeah.
Okay, it looks like you got everybody back. Except Jenna.
Jenna's there.
Okay, I'll call the meeting back to order. And first item we have under new business is the consent agenda, which is basically accepting the voucher report for March and accepting pressures report for February.
Motion to approve and motion to accept.
We have a second.
This is Lisa. I'll second.
Okay, so we have the motion by Laura. Motion by, second by Lisa. Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
You're muted, Laura. We need to hear your voice.
Aye, aye.
Motion carries. Next is a public hearing on a resolution of the Township of Ferguson, Center County, Pennsylvania, approving requirements LED V4 O plus M EQ prerequisite green cleaning policy option one.
I'll ask Dave to talk about this one.
Sure. So the LEED stands for leadership in engineering and environmental design. E4 is version four. O and M is operation and maintenance and EQs and environmental. So the Public Works Building, as you know, was designed to meet certain LEED standards and is being built in such a manner. And one of the things that our consultant team suggested.
It lasted a GH. Sorry.
Oh, and it's in accordance with our basis of design is adoption of a green cleaning policy. So the the policies included in your packet. It meets an innovation credit, talks about strategies to clean a new building. How to how we what we think about when we purchase cleaning products, how we store and handle chemicals and staff training. So the policy applies to the Public Works Building. If desired, we can expand it to the entire campus, but as written, it does apply just to the Public Works Building. So the the motion that's recommended is that the Board of Supervisors adopt the resolution approving the requirements for the LEED prerequisite for green cleaning policy.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. So if anyone cares to address the board, this is the time. Looking to you, Jeremy. Okay, let's start with the motion.
I move the Board of Supervisors adopt the resolution approving requirements LEED V4 O plus M EQ prerequisite green green cleaning policy option one.
Second.
Okay, we have the motion by Laura, second by Persenja. Any discussion?
So do you want to extend it to the rest of the building? I mean, the campus?
I think that's what we want to do. I think the manager might want us to start with the that we are required to see how it plays out. And if we got to tweak it at all, and then probably expand it to the whole campus in the future is is what I'm thinking. Is that right?
Yeah, so I I would advise against expanding these policies to be campus wide at this time. The, you know, the sustainable purchasing policy, the next item for consideration is probably something that we're going to just do as a matter of course anyway. Throughout, but at least for right now, yeah, I would like to develop and implement them and then we can look at expanding.
Sounds good.
Okay, that is a question I was gonna ask. So anything else?
So I'm so since you mentioned that I'm sort of curious. So is it just of general caution or are there things that this is to Dave? Are there things that you think we are not ready to do yet? And that's why it won't work?
Yeah, I mean, I think like all new policies, there's a little bit of of a lag in terms of, well, maybe lag isn't the right way to put it, but a learning curve, maybe in how we implement and adjust our own internal protocol to be able to adapt to it. So I'm not suggesting or or, you know, insinuating that it's a bad idea to incorporate these policies into our township wide operations. And we there's nothing that precludes us from doing so, even if the policy doesn't specifically, you know, so state this policy and the next one and the one after that, in fact, as well, are for consideration this evening are specifically to achieve edits for the new public works maintenance facility. So I think it's probably it's my recommendation anyway that we we focus on that right now, and then we can incorporate it into township wide operations where it makes sense to do so. And if there's a need to amend the policy to be more specific about that in the future, we can also do that. But I would just, you know, generally admonish against you know, maybe rushing too far in in one direction without really necessarily knowing the full details of how it's going to be administered and any changes in protocol or internal operations that are going to be warranted in response to it. But that's just my my advice on it for what it's worth.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote.
Yes, this is presented as Resolution 2020 dash 13. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mitra?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Ms. Dinany?
Yes.
The motion carries. Next item is a public hearing on a resolution of the Township of Ferguson, Center County, Pennsylvania, approving the ongoing sustainable purchasing and solid waste management policy.
Dave?
Following very much along the preamble that I gave for the for the last resolution. This resolution is for the adoption of a sustainable purchasing and solid waste management policy. And again, it would meet the requirements for an innovation credit pertains to the way we purchase consumable products. Paper is an example, durable goods, that might be office furniture, building furniture. And it specifically talks about light fixtures. It also pertains to a proper disposal of the the above. So there's quite a bit that talks about the recycling and the the way we recycle and how we dispose of batteries and electronic goods and a lot of it we're already doing, but it goes into greater detail. It also requires that we track these and kind of audit our performance to make sure we're doing what we say we're going to do. So there's an ongoing piece of it also. So again, this policy applies similarly to the new building and could be expanded in the future to the entire campus if we choose.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. So if anyone cares to address the board. Seeing none, I would take motion.
So I would like.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I'll move that the Board of Supervisors adopt the resolution approving the ongoing sustainable purchasing and solid waste management policy.
Second.
Okay, with motion by Lisa and second by Persenja. Any discussion?
Dave, I think there was, Madricker, sorry, I think there was some information given about cost considerations. Could you just talk a little bit about that?
Sure. The the policy understands that some of these types of purchases could cost more than a purchase that didn't consider, you know, certain criteria that it met certain amounts of recycled content or whatever the case may be. So it for for a yardstick and for measuring, there's metrics that might say, for example, eighty five percent of the products that you purchase, you know, need to meet this criteria, understanding that there might be fifteen percent of the products that are just out of reach from a cost standpoint. Typically, you know, a cost standpoint, they're talking about it. Is it within ten percent or hundred, ten percent, whatever you want to say of of the cost of the product that's on the market that doesn't meet these standards? As far as equipment purchases and so each category kind of has a consideration. But that's a, you know, it's a goal that we're trying to attain. And then every year we monitor it, track it and see how we're doing.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, this is a resolution. So it's a roll call vote.
This is presented as Resolution 2020 dash 14. Mr. Mitra?
Present. Sorry, yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Ms. Dinany?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes. Motion carries. Next is a public hearing on a resolution of the Township of Ferguson, Center County, Pennsylvania, amending the Ferguson Township Personnel Policy Manual by establishing a tobacco control policy.
So again, the impetus for this is the instruction of the new Public Works Building. It's also an opportunity because it is something that, you know, staff has discussed. And so this would be considering the adoption of a no smoking policy. It meets the requirements for indoor environmental quality. I have some notes in here about how smoking is a hazard. There's just, we all know that. So there's there's justifications in the resolution and in the narrative, talk about why we prohibit smoking. The other thing that's included and that I needed to provide was a site map that shows where smoking would be permitted. So there's two locations that are proposed that if the public desired to smoke, they would exit the building, walk down the sidewalk, and there's signage that would direct you to a designated smoking area, and there would be signage to indicate that it's a no smoking campus and no smoking is permitted in the building. The other thing that this does is prohibit smoking in township vehicles also.
This is a public hearing. Anyone cares to make a comment?
And then take a motion. Mentioned this is campus wide.
Okay, this one is the entire.
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I move the board, I, Laura, move the Board of Supervisors adopt the resolution amending the Ferguson Township Personnel Policy Manual by establishing a no smoking policy.
Second.
Okay, motion by Laura, second by Patty, was that?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, sure. In this case, I'm possibly more towards the side of is this going to be in any municipal building or is this only going to be in certain parts?
It would be in all municipal buildings. So right now that would pertain to all the buildings at 3147 Research Drive. So admin building, the all the outbuildings, the public works garages, as well as the new maintenance facility. So, yes.
Sounds good to me. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, this is a resolution. So it's a roll call vote.
This is presented as Resolution 2020 dash 15. Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Ms. Dinany?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mitra?
Yes.
Yeah, the motion carries.
Thank you for those three motions for the last three resolutions.
Okay. Next is a public hearing on a resolution of the Township of Ferguson Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending and supplementing the Ferguson Township Tax Collection Policy.
Thank you. So with my record of doing as little as possible tonight, I'm going to turn it over to Eric.
Thanks. I can actually talk. This relates to the COVID-19 outbreak. The governor is governor issued a stay at home order and limited certain activities, which has affected employment and income for residents. The county implemented a resolution to help taxpayers during this time and proposed that the municipalities do the same. It abates the 10% penalty for the township for a period of three months. The 2% discount period or amount has not been changed, which still ends April 30th. And the 10% penalty, however, is abated for three months to September 1st rather than July 1st for 2020 only. No other changes were made. Provided with the agenda is a copy of the resolution is advertised for public hearing.
And I'll just note too, and that this is consistent with the actions that the at least the other center regional municipalities in the county are are making Ferguson Patton College, Harris Half Moon and State College Borough. I can't speak for the other municipalities elsewhere in the county, but regionally, there's some consistency with what we are proposing.
Okay. Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone cares to address the board? Seeing none, take a motion.
Move, I, Laura, move that the Board of Supervisors adopt the resolution amending and supplementing the Ferguson Township Tax Collection Policy.
Second.
Okay, motion by Laura, second by Persenja. Is there any discussion?
The only thing I wanted to say was there's some, this is really the only or the main question I've been getting from people is about the tax dates. There's some, there's a good write up on the township website under the tax tab. And I was wondering if you could link that either on the homepage or right maybe at the top under the coronavirus resources and any update that needs to be added with this because it it gave a really good overview.
I think we could do that sent trees. Some, you got that?
Yes, got it. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. It's a resolution.
This is presented as Resolution 2020 dash 16. Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Ms. Dinany?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mitra?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
And next, we have a proclamation of watershed cleanup week in Ferguson Township.
Thank you. So typically, this is the meeting each year where the board is asked to designate water spring watershed cleanup day, which is an annual event that's hosted by Clearwater Conservancy and has been for the past 23 years. Unfortunately, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, this year's event has been canceled. But in lieu of Clear, Clearwater's watershed cleanup day, they are asking municipalities to designate and they're sponsoring a watershed cleanup week, which is going to which is gonna be um a series of smaller scale events that will allow for appropriate social distancing, more of a clean up your backyard kind of of a focus. And um you know, this year as uh contrasted to prior years, the township's not being asked to assist in any refuse collection or, or gathering, so that's all gonna be handled by uh the individuals and residents who participate in the week's activities. Um the proclamation that we've used in prior years has been slightly modified to reflect the designation of watershed cleanup week and is in your agenda.
Thank you. So do we have a motion?
I, Laura, move that the Board of Supervisors proclaim the week of May third to be watershed cleanup week in Ferguson Township.
Second.
Okay, motion by Laura, second by Patty, any discussion? Uh I would say I, I know that Clearwater would like people who are participating to go to their website and sort of log in. Uh it's one of the things they do for their accreditation is keep track of volunteer activities. So if you're interested in finding out more about what, what they're recommending is the cleanup week or, you know, logging in as a volunteer, uh that would be appreciated too, so.
Good point, Ron, I think we use this event towards our uh public involvement participation program for our, for permit, so it has a direct benefit to our stormwater permit as well.
Okay, this does not need to be a roll call, does it, Dave, for proclamation?
No, sir.
Okay, so uh all in favor of the proclamation? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh next, we have a letter of support National Fish and Wildlife Federation Grant Submission.
Um Ron or Dave, I, I don't know who's taking that one, not it.
I, I'll kick it off and then if you have any really hard questions, we'll ask Ron Seibert, who's my man project to answer them. So the township staff and the board knows that we've been working with a consultant on design improvements to stabilize erosion on in the Pine Hill way and we know that we have concerns about the cost of doing this. And um through our consultant, we've become aware of some more grant opportunities. And there are actually three letters of support and three grants that are provided in your pocket, not two as stated in the narrative, I briefly mentioned what they are. First one's National Fish and Wildlife Foundation Pennsylvania Local Government Implementation Grant. That one, we are requesting two hundred thousand dollars. It is specifically to be applied to uh certain elements of construction, namely the cost to install pools, riffle installation for regenerative stormwater conveyance and implementation funds to install repair and plantings. The second grant, Small Watershed Planning and Technical Assistance Grant, also through the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation asking for fifty thousand. And in particular, um this one would be utilized to offset some of the design costs for the floodplain modeling and engineering analysis for the regulatory compliance for FEMA as well as um final design and permitting. Thirdly, a National Fish and Wildlife Foundation Small Watershed Implementation Grant. This one for five hundred thousand dollars, this one to be applied toward um construction. Again, we list in the letter um pool riffle installation or generative stormwater conveyance. So that is my introduction. The requested motion is that the board authorize the submission of the three grant applications.
Let's start with motion, then we go to stuff.
I, Laura, move the Board of Supervisors authorize the submission of three grant applications to the National Fish and Wildlife Federation for improvements to the Park Hills Drainage Way and authorize the chairman to sign letters of support for each submission.
Second.
Okay, motion by Laura, second by percentage, any discussion?
Thank you.
Question? Okay, all in, uh percentage, did you have a question?
No, 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 thank you.
All of them. Um all in favor? Aye?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, or all opposed? The three opposed?
Thanks for doing all that work.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm not shaking my head, Ron shakes his head at this point.
Yeah, well, we'll thank, we'll thank NTM because they did most of the heavy lifting and they donated a lot of their time in order to pull the application together for us since we weren't successful the first. Kudos to NTM for that.
Great.
Yeah, I, I think they really felt uh a sense of uh I'm, I'm using the word ownership, but they're, they're, they're batting for us.
That's great, thank you.
Keep our fingers crossed.
Okay, next is an authorization of an ordinance for public hearing amending chapter fifteen Motor Vehicles and Traffic Part Four General Parking Regulations, Section four oh three Parking Prohibited at All Times in Certain Locations.
So in, in front of you is um what you would need to advertise for a, a public hearing to establish an, an ordinance and it it's parking restrictions that are a result of complaints that staff received. So in, in particular, we received complaints at, at two different locations, the first oh, okay, we have.
I'm gonna share, if that's, if that makes sense, I'll share and then you can.
I had a little panic attack when the screen went black while I was talking. It's simply a slide that's coming up, so the first one is for a complaint for a resident having difficulty pulling out of a driveway on East Pine Grove Road. Staff conducted a site distance study, found a large vehicle with a truck was blocking the site distance, so as such, staff is, is recommending some parking restrictions. Similarly, at a different location, um one that more traffic would be involved, not just a single driveway pulling out, although it is a low volume road. But uh we've gotten complaints uh about difficulty seeing, pulling out of Johnson Road when looking east, when looking to the left on Whitehall Road to see oncoming traffic. There are times when, again, a uh truck and trailer are blocking the site distance. Staff did a study and as such is recommending that there be parking restrictions posted in that location. Ron is also with us, between the two of us, we can answer any questions or at least try that you might have and we're asking that the Board of Supervisors authorize the ordinance for a public hearing uh on May eighteen.
Thank you, thank you for looking into those situations.
You're welcome.
Can I move that?
Yep.
This is authorized for a public hearing for May eighteenth, these two items.
Second.
A motion by Laura, second by percentage, any discussion or questions? Saying none, all in favor? Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh next is the award of, no. An authorization for an ordinance for public hearing, chapter fifteen Motor Vehicles and Traffic Part Two Traffic Regulations Section two fifteen Stop Intersections to Save.
Dave?
Yeah, again, um a complaint generated um or was the cause of uh staff taking a look at this intersection and in particular there was a near miss between a bicyclist that was coming down Curtain Street, so traveling south on Curtain and crossed in front of a, a vehicle without stopping, the vehicle was on Clinton Avenue trying to make a left to go up Curtain Street and the bicycle was headed for the McKee Street Bike Path. So again, uh the township engineer completed a study in his judgment um to better establish the right way at the intersection, the southbound Curtain Street approach should be signed with a stop sign that below it has a supplemental plaque that says accept right turn. And um Dave has pulled up a location map. So again, the vehicle was on Clinton Avenue headed to the L intersection, turning left. Bicyclist was coming down and made a, a movement, cutting left onto the path in front of the motorist. So this is an effort to better establish the right way and, and sign it to alert vehicles and bicyclists of which a bicycle is supposed to obey the motor vehicle law, that they are supposed to stop unless they're making a right hand turn.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Um I just have one, it just, sometimes it was, was it a resident that complained or was it, because a lot of the traffic that goes up Curtain there, quite honestly, comes from people who are getting work done at the auto body and so you know, they wouldn't, yeah, I don't know, yeah, I, I understand that you're trying to alert this cyclists that they have to follow the rules, but um it, it's really a dead end for both streets and I don't necessarily I'm just concerned about the traffic that comes out of that driveway as well, if you're going to put a a stop sign, maybe something should be there for them as well, coming out of the business.
Now the, and Ron, go ahead and unmute yourself so you can j- join this discussion. But the, the stop sign on Curtain would not affect motor vehicles greatly because it still allows a right turn movement, so.
Right, which is the only way to go.
Right. Yeah, so Ron, can you recall, not necessarily who, but was the complainant a resident of Overlook Heights?
Yeah, the complainant was a long time resident of Overlook Heights, they had the, the incident occur to her when she was turning up Curtain Street from Clinton.
Okay, I mean, it just because it's, it's, I'm surprised really that I mean, most people know this situation there, whether it's cyclists or skateboarders or whatever, but okay.
Yeah, and I guess I'll throw this out there too, since it hasn't been brought up yet, I'm not sure what level of compliance we're gonna get from bicyclists coming down the hill actually stopping.
Right.
It does assign right away and therefore liability. Um but I've included in my recommendation internally that what we're gonna do is once it's posted, most likely uh once the students come back in the fall, um well, once, whenever the students come back um we observe that intersection to see how effective they are with compliance and uh maybe even consider some additional supplemental signing to advise the bicyclist of the hazard as well.
Any other questions or comments? And in that case, take a motion? Come on, anybody can do it.
I move. Am I muted? No, okay. I move the Board of Supervisors authorize the ordinance for public hearing for May eighteenth, twenty twenty.
Second.
Okay, the motion by Laura, second by percentage, any further discussion? Say none, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Um next, we have an award of contract twenty twenty dash C one Street Improvement Projects North.
But Dave?
Yep, bids were open for this contract on Tuesday, March seventeenth, publicly read aloud. The roads included in this contract are blue, a section of Blue Course Drive and a section of Saratoga Drive. The bid opening was attended by um a number of people listed in the memorandum. The bid was advertised in the Center Daily Times and invitations were also sent to um quite a few qualified contractors. We received four bids, I'd like to read them into the record, New Enterprise Stone and Lime Company Inc., three hundred twenty thousand, seven hundred sixty-eight dollars. Glenn O. Hawbaker, thirty-seven thousand, six hundred forty-eight dollars. Ameron Construction Inc., three hundred ninety-six thousand, nine hundred forty-five, thirty-two cents. HRI Inc., four hundred sixty-eight thousand, one hundred twelve dollars. The engineer's estimate was three hundred sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred ninety-two dollars. The budget, four hundred thirty-seven thousand. I recommend the Board of Supervisors award the contract to New Enterprise Stone and Lime Inc. for a total amount of three hundred twenty thousand, seven hundred sixty-eight dollars. I think I put something else in here too, uh subject to the contractor submitting their COVID nineteen safety plan to the township prior to starting work.
Okay, any questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I moved that the Board of Supervisors award contract twenty twenty C one Street Improvement Projects North to New Enterprise Stone and Lime Company Incorporated in the amount of dollar three hundred twenty thousand, seven hundred sixty-eight, subject to the contractor submitting a COVID nineteen safety plan for the job acceptable to the township prior to starting work.
Second, Lisa.
Motion by percentage, second by Lisa, uh any discussion? Uh saying none, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, motion carries. Uh next is an award of contract twenty twenty dash C two Street Improvement Projects West.
Similar to the C one project, uh bids were opened on March seventeenth. This project includes sections of Dibler Road Dry Hollow Road and Whitehall Road. Bid opening was attended by um a number of personnel. Again, this was advertised in the Center Daily Times and again, also invitations were sent to a number of qualified contractors. In this case, we received three bids that I'd like to read into the record. New Enterprise Stone and Lime Company Inc., the amount of five hundred twenty-four thousand, five hundred ninety-six dollars, seventy-five cents. Hawbaker Inc. in the amount of five hundred seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred seventy-two dollars. HRI Inc. in the amount of six hundred nineteen thousand, six hundred fifty-three dollars, seventy cents. The engineer's estimate was seven hundred twenty-five thousand, nine hundred sixty-eight dollars. In this case, the budget was six hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars. I'm recommending the Board of Supervisors award the contract to New Enterprise Stone and Lime Company Inc. for a total of five hundred twenty-four thousand, five hundred ninety-six dollars, seventy-five cents. Again, subject to the contractor submitting the COVID nineteen safety plan for the job to the township prior to starting work.
Thank you, any questions or comments? I would just like to comment that I'm happy to see projects coming in under our budget this year. Because that's uh, that'd be important to us later. Okay, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I moved that the Board of Supervisors award contract twenty twenty C two Street Improvement Projects West to New Enterprise Stone and Lime Company Incorporated in an amount of dollar five hundred twenty-four thousand, five hundred ninety-six and seventy-five cents subject to the contractor submitting a COVID nineteen safety plan for the job acceptable to the township prior to starting work.
Second.
Yeah, the motion by percentage, second by Patty, any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, next is reports. Okay, next is reports for cog committees. We only have the Executive Committee. That's the only committee meeting as far as I know. We did have a Zoom meeting on, I believe it was the seventh. It was all routine business, affirming the emergency declaration, authorizing Eric Norberg to sign checks, those sort of things. Finance Committee had a work session. Basically, we were informed that the loan refinance has been delayed with everything going on with the banks. The bank was not able to get back to Chris as far as the potential new terms. So that'll be coming up, but at this point, it was just pretty much overwhelmed and had not been able to submit a anything in writing yet, so. We'll be waiting on that. Other than that, essentially, the Executive Committee is only handling things that have to be dealt with. We're not doing any policy decisions until things that back where we can have meetings at the unless they have to be decided on, so. That's exactly where we stand now, so.
Thank you, Steve. I think it's actually maybe in your agenda for tomorrow, Executive Committee. There is an item that has to do with the regional greenhouse gas reduction. I think.
I I have to take a look at that. I'll have to take a look at that agenda. I looked at it by the.
Yeah, sorry, I no fair, I'm springing it on you. I guess then I'll ask my question in advance for tomorrow, if if I'm if I'm reading correctly, which I'm I'm not sure that I was. But it it seemed like there was going to be a proposal for maybe two new staff people to implement the regional greenhouse gas action plan.
Look at that, I don't. Uh, we wouldn't, unless it's some staff assignment of somebody who's already in the budget, we wouldn't be uh, doing, you know, hiring new people unless it was in last, the budget that was approved last year.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So that's why I was a little bit confused by maybe I thought I misunderstood what I was actually reading there.
I'll check on that tomorrow, but we wouldn't be new new positions that weren't in the budget already.
Okay. And yeah, and if what I was reading is we are going, yeah, I mean, if what I was reading is we're going to do that, then my understanding is we already have two staff people that are working on it. So would it result in four staff people that are working on that? So just to follow up.
I'll check on that.
Thanks.
And the the meeting tomorrow is Zoom and it's open, so.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Okay. Thanks.
Anything else as far as call?
Steve, I just wanted to ask quickly if there, they're, I'm sure that there have not been any decisions made, but was there a discussion by Parks and Rec about when they would start to give some guidance about summer camps and the pools to have, are they starting to discuss some timelines yet or not at all even yet?
They are discussing it and putting contingency plans in, but I think right now, as far as, you know, the announcements will come out as we get information from the state. I don't think I I don't think we have enough guidance yet to know when the opening would be for those things.
I I can add, just today, the Director Pam Salakangis circulated a communication out to the managers about beginning to talk about that subject. I probably can't share everything that's in it, but the wheels are starting to turn. I know that that conversation.
Thank you.
And next we have managers' report.
Uh, thank you. I'll I'll leave some of my report to just kind of stand as written, but a couple of things that are worth mentioning. There is an attachment to my report, but because it's a protected document, I wasn't able to fold it into one attachment. I had to include it separately, which is the actuarial evaluation. That's completed by the firm Conrad Siegel, Killex or Actuary for the Police Pension. For the Police Pension Fund, excuse me. So at least as of December thirty first, twenty nineteen, the performance of the fund was very strong. The plan was about eighty-five percent funded, which is a pretty significant increase over the funding ratio from the prior year. So there was reason to be optimistic. I'll preface everything that I'm saying by the market volatility that's taken place in the first quarter of of twenty twenty, or in the second quarter of twenty twenty rather, has probably sent some of these the 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 planned performance into a bit of a tailspin. And so I don't have any updated numbers, but as trustees of the police pension plan, I thought you should all have a copy of that and be able to look at our net position, at least as audited for the twenty nineteen fiscal year. Uh, the the Parks and Recreation Committee met virtually on April sixteenth. The primary agenda item was to discuss the plans for the undeveloped portion of Cecil Urban Park, particularly the maintenance of that area. We had some uh, concerned residents who live in the adjoining neighborhood about uh, the township's practice in the year, in the prior past two years, frankly, of of not mowing that undeveloped area. So we're going to incorporate that at their recommendation back into our typical maintenance regimen, which would be mowing it every every couple of weeks or four to five times a growing season, we'll we'll hit it along with our roadside operations. Our roadside mowing operations out in the West End. So that should hopefully go a long way to make some of the residents that live on Sunday Drive a little happier with the you know, with the maintenance of that area there. And then lastly, just something I'd be interested in getting the boards even just head nod in concurrence on. Um, as you all probably recall, we have a a budget this year appropriation to conduct a more detailed satellite fire station feasibility needs assessment. Or, you know, need needs assessment. Uh, Centris and I have received two proposals to our last request for proposals, and we reviewed them both with Cent Region Fire Director Steve Bear. We looked at the scope of work, not only that we requested that they provide, but compared to what they actually provided to us, and I think both of the respondents have some pretty glaring gaps in their proposed scopes and in their proposals. In other words, I'm not confident in recommending an award of either to you all to move forward. And given that we're having a regional fire station comprehensive plan that's being done concurrently with our evaluation of these proposals, my suggestion and what I'm looking for your agreement on, if you agree, is that we defer that project until the twenty twenty-one program year. This will give us time to evaluate the results from the regional study that's being done, and then presumably or potentially anyway, modify our scope to better reflect what we're really looking for in that, based on what the outcome is of that regional analysis. So for example, if if one of the outcomes of the regional analysis is that we ought to start planning for and evaluating a paid fire, a paid fire department, well, that may dictate a different scope of work for our local analysis than what we're planning on doing based on a volunteer fire department. So the unknowns coupled with the fact that both of the proposals that we received really didn't exactly reflect the work that we're we were hoping to get out of this needs assessment. My recommendation is that we defer it to a future year. And again, I'm just looking for your concurrence because this is a budgeted expense, so I would like to get your agreement before I just make that decision. I see a thumbs up from Ms. Stevens. A virtual thumbs up. Okay, so if everybody's okay with that, that was all I had, unless there's any questions. From the board.
Yeah, thanks. I'm okay with it, but I guess I will say that I'm, I guess I'm a little bit disappointed still about kind of not really making progress in terms of services in the West End, so. You know. It's just so all the board members know, like, our fire hydrants don't work in some parts of Western Ferguson Township. And so it's just, you know, fire service is extra concerning as an issue, I guess. But I understand why we're doing this.
I would echo those feelings. You know, it's it is vital that we have these services available to out in this in this direction. I know part of the reason the the placement of this fire station in this area was maybe to be a little bit more inviting to volunteers, so that if it was closer to where they lived, it would be easier for people to volunteer. So if we're going to go to a different model, then that's not going to make sense. So I I understand postponing this and and with that, I would just say I hope that the regional fire study is moving, moving along.
So I think I I agree with that as being part of the prioritization of the location. But also, if I understand correctly, it's if there's an expectation of level of service for the folks that live out toward the Western End to be similar to the level of service that is received in other parts of the township. That 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 location would help, you know, us achieve that that level of service out here. Like, there is a difference in level of service.
That's correct. The the Alpha Fire Company is currently meeting standards for rural service delivery out to the West End, but citing a satellite fire station, um, at least according to the Center Region Fire Director's analysis in twenty seventeen that he prepared. Really right along Whitehall Road, somewhere west of Nixon Road, would enable the Alpha Service to to upgrade its response time to meet suburban standards in that in that geographic area. So we didn't do any analysis beyond that to really determine whether residents were, I mean, presumably, everybody wants to have better fire service, but would they support you know, the additional cost burden because much like, you know, for example, our our park development and arrangement, it would be obligation of the municipality to acquire the land and construct the fire station where it would then be turned over to the Center Region Fire Program to supply it with apparatus, to staff it and to maintain it. But it would be our, meaning Ferguson Township's initial initial capital expense to do the land acquisition and the design and construction, which could be several several million dollars depending on what the needs are out there and what the site constraints are.
Thank you. So definitely, it's expensive. And I understand why we're doing this, but just to keep keep in mind that it's an important priority.
And I think the board will be keeping that in mind as we go forward. I suspect we'll make sure of that. And but I think that the the question of what we're going to be doing going forward with the professional versus volunteer or some hybrid of that could really affect what the best choice will be for where we go. So I think that.
Is that at the board level or do we, will we be doing that at the cog level?
Cog.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, that's underway already, the
Yeah.
That evaluation, yeah.
Yeah. Thanks.
Okay, so we have Public Works Director's report.
My report is in your packet. Operations remain similar to the last time I reported. Think you have heard or a report now that we anticipate starting brush collection, leaf collection, roadside mowing, street sweeping Monday, May fourth. That will be done in accordance with what I am calling my, our COVID nineteen return to work safety plan for public works employees, which I've discussed with them and prepared in consultation with the manager and a lot of the guidance that you see coming out from owners' office, Department of Health, CDC. Um, office workers, uh, depending on their particular situation, may be continuing with remote work or restarting in the office or a combination of that and field work. The Public Works Maintenance Facility work started today. You may not have seen a lot of earthmoving, but I know they were remobilized back on site and they the contractor Fury and their and the other three prime contractors all submitted COVID nineteen safety plans and we're doing work following guidance of restarted projects that was published by Pendot. Really talks about different aspects of communication, schedules, safety. What work can be done remotely, how inspections are conducted, and the plans that contractors need to put together. The rest of my report really is kind of an update on some of the capital projects, some of which I already discussed with you. Yeah, that's my report.
Thank you. Questions for Dave? So now with the Planning and Zoning Directors Report.
Planning Commission met Monday thirteenth and they reviewed everything. Uh, we saw tonight. Those are the three active plans that we have right now. There's Cecilwood Lot nineteen. There's a lot of outstanding geotechnical reviews with that one, so I'm imagining they'll be slotted for end of May for Planning Commission. Uh, we've been working on the tree preservation ordinance. Affordable housing ordinance and trying to update all of our outreach materials that we've had on the website, what we've had in the building, trying to get up to date with the new ordinances that we've adopted back in November. And zoning hearing board has been pushed to May right now.
Any questions for Jenna? Okay, we'll go to Chief of Police.
Thank you. My report is in the packet. It's for the month of March. For the last half of March, which would have been the first two weeks of the stay at home order, we were very quiet. Activity was very slow, but as the weeks progress here, I think everybody's kind of getting cabin fever, warm weather, wanting to get outside. So we're getting closer to our normal activity levels. Couple notable incidents in the month of March. We arrested a thirty-six-year-old woman that assaulted her partner and held a gun to her head. The suspect was charged with a variety of crimes. We also had a serious crash out on Moringo Road involving a all-terrain vehicle that crashed into a utility pole. The driver sustained numerous broken bones and was flown to UPMC Altoona, and fortunately, he's back home recovering now. We've fielded numerous calls on the essential operations and stay-at-home and employee safety orders in the last couple of days. And probably the most important part of all this is the officers that were sick. Two of them have fully recovered and are back to work. And one will return later on this week. And that summarizes my report.
Okay, any questions for the chief? Okay, are there any communications to the board that should be shared?
Sure, I I don't know if this is a communication per se, but there are a a couple. So it's not alarming, but people are asking about our finances and what's happening with the taxes and are our tax returns, I mean, tax collection is going to go down and are we firing people or raising taxes, things like that. Sort of all related, but just a couple of comments.
Sort of all related, but just a couple of comments and I pretty much say, I don't know, well, I'll find out, we'll know.
Yeah, at this point, you could tell we would not be considering any tax increases in our budget time this fall. There'd be plenty of discussion before that would happen, so. Other than that. We're doing what we can within the. Within the. Parameters we have to work under, so.
Related to the financial question, I don't know, Dave Provoca that. I know that we got a discount. For auto insurance because we weren't driving for so long, did the, did the township get any sort of discount as well?
No.
Okay.
No, and I mean, to answer it really, this to Mr. Meacher's question, it's a little bit on, it's a little bit difficult to predict at this time. I mean, I think it'd be naive to say that we're not going to feel any impact on our revenue. In fact, I think you can most certainly say that our revenue will, particularly with earned income tax and and, you know, Penn State University's proceeding. May give us some some things that we really need to take a hard look at, but. It's it's tough to quantify at this point, I think, you know, Eric and I will will look at this closely over the coming weeks. And in May, we'll probably get a much better picture of of what impact, certainly the month of April, will have on our overall overall revenue stream. You know, we have a good fund balance that, you know, gives us reason to be confident that we won't have any concerns this year relative to our expenditures, but. I think the impacts of this. Will. Develop over time and and will require some. Real tough decision-making on the part of of staff and the board as well.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I thought, and one of the, I guess. One of them, if I remember correctly, sort of forwarded the article, which the Center County. Commissioners voted to furlough and so on, and just like, you know, are we going to do that and so on, so. In that sense, those questions are coming.
I I haven't furloughed any staff yet and it's not currently being considered. I think if the plan for us to reconstitute and recover moves forward as. As we hope it will, there won't be a need to take any of those measures. If there's any, you know, change in that, then that's something that we'll have to consider. On a case-by-case basis.
Laura.
Thank you. This is, it it came from a communication, but I wanted to ask if. We would consider doing something about it, and I know there's that a process to get things on the agenda, but. Just kind of want to introduce it here since I got it through communication. So some people received exemptions from. Having to close some businesses, sorry. And others, they applied for a waiver and they didn't. And I was just wondering if it would be possible for the board to write a letter if we decided it was a good idea. In favor of. The governor granting an exemption, like sending it to the governor that has 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 not been granted, had been denied. So Steve. Is that something that we would ever consider doing? And I would just put that. On an agenda item, and do you think also? That those kinds of constraints are going to be lifted? And maybe without knowing the details, maybe you don't know, like construction. In the next couple of weeks that I wouldn't have to worry about trying to move this forward.
Yeah, that's my understanding, if you're talking about a construction project, is that there are plans by May 8. To have a process in place. That would make that a, I mean, you know. Approved activity.
Okay.
I sus, I mean, we could write a letter and I would not be opposed to it. I suspect it would have no effect. I mean, you know, it's realistically.
Thanks.
With the several hundred thousand applications they've had.
Sure.
I suspect that a letter from a township would probably carry about as much weight as.
Well, we're like one of 2,000 and some, so maybe.
I mean, I I wouldn't be opposed to it, but I think. At this point, since there seems to be a plan. To have construction back on. On track by May 8 with some restrictions. Just to wait and see where that goes and. I wanted to shoot things down, but I. I I just think that, especially with that being in the works, it probably have no effect for us to do it.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks.
Anything else? Well, I think this meeting went very well. Strange not seeing each other, but. It's, uh. Everybody seems to have a pretty good. Feel for what we're doing now, so. Guess we'll be doing this again in a couple of weeks. On that note, I'd take motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. Thank you.